Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. The meeting of the Housing Authority and the Sacramento City Council shall come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Lalois is expected momentarily. Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Here.
Councilmember Geta?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. This is our regular meeting of the Sacramento Housing Authority. For those watching for the first time, the city council is also the housing authority of the city of Sacramento. And when we meet specifically to discuss housing authority issues, we meet as the housing authority and the city council so that there's no confusion, but at the same body. Let us begin with the pledge of allegiance here, if we might. I would ask our executive director, LaShelle Dozier, if she would please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. Thank you very, very much. Let us begin with the consent calendar. Does anybody have any questions? I'm sorry.
I'll move consent, mayor.
Okay.
Jennings will second that.
Is there public testimony, Madam Clerk?
I do have, I do have one hand raised.
Go ahead, please.
It appears they've put it down. It must not be for the consent calendar. So I have no callers on the consent calendar.
Okay. If there's nothing further from any of the members, I don't see anybody up to speak, let us call the roll, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes, sorry.
Councilmember Lalois absent. Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Very good. That's the consent calendar. We have two discussion calendar items today. One is obviously item number two, which is our one-year action plan for a variety of resources that are coming our way. Let me turn it over to our executive director, Ms. Dozier, to lead the presentation.
Yes. So we have, Celia here is going to give us the presentation on the action plan.
Hi, Celia. Good morning. Good afternoon to you.
Good afternoon. Mayor and members of the council, Celia Inigas, program manager here at SHA. I have a brief presentation for the 2022 action plan. Just going to hit a few highlights of what we've accomplished with the variety of funding sources and then talk about a high-level overview of the activities as well. So just as a reminder, we, every five years, we prepare and the city council adopts the consolidated plan that is currently valid between 2020 and 2024. And this is the overall goals and objectives for the four entitlement programs from HUD, that's Community Development Block Grant or CDPG, home, home partnership for affordable housing, the emergency solutions grant for prevention and addressing homelessness, and housing opportunities for persons with AIDS. And then every year, we come before you to allocate those funds in the one-year action plan to projects and ongoing programs. Just a few accomplishments this year in 2021. CDPG was used for the remediation of some lead on a formerly redevelopment age, redevelopment agency-owned site at 1224 D Street. We've also put in funding for the Robertson Community Center that is going on in two phases. And we provided funding for the renovation that, of the existing field that's going on, and the city resources and other resources are going to expand and add new fields as well. So that's a great pairing of using a variety of sources to improve a community, neighborhood, community center and park. We also provided some funding to the transportation project, the Stockton Boulevard corridor plan, to increase the amount of community input on that plan. We also provided funds for SIMS Center signals, so two new pedestrian signals to improve that safety, to that very vital resource in the community. And then finally, to funding for the Susan B. Anthony Park improvements. It's a school-owned property, but now it's been improved for new play, play activities and amenities for the community as well as being accessible to the community now. So we're very pleased about the variety of projects that were accomplished in 2021. Public service activities, so we continue to provide funding to Meals on Wheels for homeless services, providing housing assistance and emergency shelter beds, as well as our home repair program, the Safe at Home program, which is operated through Rebuilding Together, and then, of course, the total number of shelter bed nights. In 2022, we have a lot of projects, which is a great thing. We are funding the new signals at North Gate and, uh, North Gate between, uh, sorry, 80 and I-5. So there's two new signals at two different intersections, as well as improving the signalization for the North Gate community. We've also are funding a variety of park construction projects, as well as design and designing construction. So a lot going on in our parks, much-needed improvements and repairs going on. But we're also very, very excited to be able to fund two new parks to assist the city in doing that. So the first is in District 6 at the, it's called the 21st Street median. It's currently a median, but with this plan, it will be, be able to be designated as a park and, and improved for that community, which is, has, is underserved from the acreages of parks per people, per persons. The other park is at Thelma and Hawke in the North Gate community in District 3. And again, we're going to be preparing a master plan. And I always like to point out that what we do with CDPG is help with project readiness in the area of parks. So we are funding the, the plan now, the master plan. And then in future years, we anticipate funding the design development documents as well as construction. And that may happen over, you know, three, two to three years, just depending on the scope of the project. So we always are keeping an eye to the future projects that will happen. We are continuing to provide a variety of services with our CDPG, so non-community, non-public infrastructure projects. So continuing with Meals on Wheels, which is very important, our home repair program. And we have a new program that we are also very pleased to be initiating. We received $2 million from HUD for a lead-based paint hazardous reduction. And this is a grant up to $10,000 for homes built prior to 1978 where a child of, that is five or younger is present, and that could be a child that's there full-time, or maybe it's a grandparent that is doing childcare for the family, and that, so that would be, also be eligible. And so we anticipate that will begin in early 2022. We have to staff up, but we're very excited to do that. CDPG, $100,000, and CDCDBG will be used as the match.
And a quick question on that. I, I thought when we got briefed, I didn't realize it was only caused by paint. Is it lead in your house? Excuse me. We have things near the airport that have gotten lead from flying planes coming over or, you know, old cars that were in the front of the house?
That's a good question. As I understand it, and I will verify and double, and circle back with, with you, Councilmember Shenier, my understanding is it also could be lead in the soil. I don't know that it matters where, how it has originated, but it could be lead paint and lead in the soil. But I will double-check with our project coordinator on that.
Great. Thank you.
So we'll continue on with ESG, providing funding for rapid rehousing and emergency shelter. Home, continuing to provide funding to our multifamily program. We are receiving nearly $9 million in home American Rescue Plan and allocation. Here, we're just allocating it to, at the larger programmatic level, to permanent supportive housing. And of course, any projects will come along, will require city council approval. We also continue to find, fund HAPWA. This year, we did release an RFP, so, let me take a step back. So HAPWA provide funding for rental assistance and, and case management. Currently, the current providers are for individuals. And so we found, we were pointed out that, that there's also service providers that provide the same services to families. So we released an RFP and we awarded it to Sunburst, who will be providing those services to families in 2021, 2022, excuse me. So we're always trying to make sure we don't have gaps in our services. And because we did have available funding, we are expanding the services in 2022 for HAPWA. Oh, and HAPWA stands for, thank you, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. So the family, it could be head of household, or it could be an individual in that household that would allow that household to be eligible for HAPWA. And then we'll continue to provide funding for housing, for fair housing activities. That's our renters helpline and legal services. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Is there public testimony? Are there questions from members? I see Councilmember Valenzuela, and I know I have one question. Go ahead, council member.
Thank you, mayor. Mine was more of a comment of thanks to the SHA team and to the city teams, who I know work really closely together to create these lists and did, I think, a really good job of identifying some fantastic projects. And I just wanted to highlight one very small project in particular that's in this list, which is a study around the Chinatown area in my district. Some of you may know, it's this little hidden block in the middle of downtown that you wouldn't know was there unless you were walking through it. And they unfortunately suffered some vandalism earlier, earlier this year, a lot of challenges with those buildings. And part of this funding is going to help the city work together to make some plans for improvements in that area. And I just think it's so great that we're paying some attention to this little block that houses a lot of seniors, a lot of low-income apartments and other services. So just wanted to thank you all for your inclusion of that. And with that, mayor, I'm happy to move, move this item.
Very good. Is there a second? Second? I, I think this is a great plan. I do have one question, clarification, which is, um, on the issue of home, um, there are two categories of home funding, as you described a moment ago, Celia, which is a one, one-time amount from the ARPA funds. And I think you described that as going towards our, our homeless intervention plans of varying degrees. On the home ongoing funding, which is, amounts to almost $5 million, maybe a little less than $5 million, I, I didn't under, I didn't quite get that description. And the reason why I ask is that I want to make sure that we are consistent here, because I'll mention this for a later item as well, but on August 10th, the council unanimously passed a comprehensive siting plan to address homelessness. And as one of the addendums to the plan was the funding sources available for us to implement that plan. And it amounts to $100 million. And included in that amount, included in that matrix, is the $9 million of one-time home funds, but also the $5 million of ongoing home investments. And so i-if it is not going to be used for the implementation of our comprehensive homeless plan here, then we're going to have to make up $5 million somewhere. And I just wanted to know what the intent was for the ongoing home funds amounting to about $5 million, please.
The ongoing home funds are the funds that we are using to help leverage the Home Key projects, which is a part of the comprehensive siting plan.
Then you just answered my question perfectly. I just wasn't sure. Now, that clarification is very, very helpful. So all, all the resources that are consistent with the, with the comprehensive siting plan. Good. Ready?
I also had a response already to Councilmember Shenier. We did take a look at that issue in terms of lead. It could be in the soil or in the paint, internal or external. So exactly what you mentioned would be eligible.
Great. So we'll certainly work with you for the Mangan Park neighborhood.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's call the roll on the item, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, I did have one member of the public that would like to speak on this item, Crystal Straight.
Hi. Actually, my name's Andrew Powers. I'm Crystal's husband. And we just want to voice our opinion in just making sure that the council shares our passion with helping provide homeless resources, including the recent hotel located downtown Sacramento that's been proposed as one of those project Home Key facilities for the homeless constituents in our community. We just, we really hope they take that into consideration and when bringing this up for a vote later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Andy. Yeah, that's the next item before us, but it, you know, it all fits together because this is, this item is taking up the overall funding. All right. Anybody else?
I have no more callers.
Okay, then let us call the roll, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Lalois absent. Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. That passes nine to nothing. Thank you very much. Let's now move to the second discussion item, which is item three on our agenda. Ms. Weiger?
I will kick it off and-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll do an introduction, then I'll turn it on over to Christine.
Okay.
Good afternoon. LaShelle Dozier, executive director at SHA. As you recall, on August 10th, 2021, the council unanimously approved a comprehensive siting plan that the mayor was just referencing to address the growing crisis of homelessness. The plan was the result of a council-led community outreach that began in January of this year and included hundreds of participants. A key component of the plan was motel conversions to house homeless individuals. The comprehensive siting plan set a goal of six motel conversions to address homelessness. There are two major benefits of motel conversions. First, the ability to acquire, renovate, and house households within an expedited timeframe as opposed to conventional construction. The second benefit is the ability to leverage its significant financial resources from the state of California in the form of Project Home Key. The state has allocated a total of $2.75 billion to local jurisdictions to assist in the acquisition and operation of motel conversions. Last month, the state of California published their notice of funding availability for entities to apply for Home Key funds and to, to convert these structures into permanent supportive housing. This is the second round of Home Key funding. Last year, the first round funds were awarded to convert a hotel in South Sacramento known as LaMancha, which has now been successfully operating for almost a year. The first project in this round was approved last week by the city council and is located in the north area, specifically the Stade Bridge project in North Natomas. Now, SHA wishes to partner with an affordable housing developer, Danco, to submit a Home Key application and enter into funding agreements for a project in the central city. The project will convert the Best Western, known as Sutter House, and located at 12th and 8th Streets into permanent supportive housing for homeless. So I now will turn it over to Christine Weiger to provide details on this exciting project.
Thank you, LaShelle. So good afternoon. As well, I shall mention, the developer is Danco Communities, an affordable housing developer who has constructed over 25 affordable housing developments throughout Sacramento, California, including several permanent supportive housing developments. This will be their first project in Sacramento, and it should be noted that the Sutter House owner reached out to Danco after making the decision to sell the property. Danco entered into a purchase and sale agreement with the property owner before reaching out to SHA. Only then did SHA begin reviewing the project and determine its feasibility. Central Sacramento Studios, the name for the motel after it's been converted to housing, will provide 92 permanent supportive homeless housing studios plus one manager's unit. Each unit will include newly installed kitchenettes, and the units will be restricted to households earning 30% or less of area income. Danco anticipates applying to SHA for project-based vouchers next year after the kitchens are installed. Repair and renovations to the interior units, offices, and common areas will also take place. Amenities will include a fitness center, pool, sports area, and pet area. Central Sacramento Studios will be managed by Danco Property Management. They currently manage Danco's permanent supportive housing developments, including the Home Key-funded project in Oakland. The project will have a property manager who lives onsite, maintenance staff, 24/7 desk clerk coverage, and security patrols. In addition, there'll be three full-time case managers. One case manager for the units restricted to the Mental Health Services Act funding or MHSA funding, and this case manager will be provided by the county of Sacramento. Life steps will provide additional two full-time case managers. All three case managers will provide one-on-one counseling and assistance to the residents. Lastly, life steps will provide 15 hours of weekly onsite resident services, such as health resources, life skills, and employment resource readiness, employment readiness, excuse me. This level of resident services is in line with other successful permanent supportive housing projects SHA has funded in the past. In addition, like 7th and H and other supportive housing developments, there's adequate internal meeting and outdoor space for the residents to gather and receive services. In addition to Home Key and MHSA funding, Central Sacramento Studios financing includes an SHA loan of $4 million and $1.2 million in operating funds. It should be noted that it was, it's only last month, as LaShelle said, that HCD announced applications for this program, which could be submitted on or after September 30th. SHA staff reached out to the Alkali Mansion Flat Neighborhood Association and Downtown Partnership to discuss the project on, on September 23rd. It attended a neighborhood association meeting to answer questions about the project on October 14th. While we understand this is a quick process, Home Key funding awards are made on a first-come, first-served basis. Approximately $1.4 billion is available in Home Key funding this round, but only $54 million is available in the Sacramento region, which is made up of Sacramento and five other counties. The Home Key request for the Natomas project approved last week was for approximately $29 million in Home Key, leaving only $25 million available in our jurisdiction. This Home Key request for this project is $22 million. It is imperative that we apply as soon as possible. A delay could mean another project being submitted, leaving insufficient funds for this project. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the Central Sacramento Studios project. If Home Key funds are awarded, occupancy could occur as early as late next spring, and staffs available to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm sure there will be many questions here. Let's hear from the public first. How many people do we have signed up, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have seven people signed up to speak on this item.
All right. Let's, let's hear from the public.
First one is Mike Testa.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberger, Steinberg, and members of the city council. My name is Mike Testa, and I'm the president and CEO of Visit Sacramento. While Visit Sacramento would prefer that the Best Western Sutter House remain an active hotel, we have to respect the wishes of the property owner and understand the opportunity this building presents to the city to address the need to provide permanent housing for the unsheltered. For the record, we are supportive of utilizing non-convention hotels for affordable housing and for housing the unsheltered. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind you that we have a significant shortfall of hotel rooms in downtown and in our city. In recent years, we've lost the Clarion, the Radisson, and as of a few months ago, Downtown's Holiday Inn Express. Losing another 90-plus rooms is in the direction that we need to be going when it comes to hotel room inventory. To give you an idea of how we've used the Best Western Sutter House, we currently have more than 2,600 convention delegate rooms contracted into that hotel in 2022 and beyond. If the city council approves the proposed resolution, we must now find room alternatives for those delegates. As all of you know, we have a brand-new convention center, and Visit Sacramento is seeing early success in booking out future years of conventions. But we cannot significantly grow this market without more hotels. We cannot create your maximized return on investment on the convention center without the addition of more rooms. For those reasons, we look forward to continue working with the city council and staff to build new convention-serving hotels in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Pamela Elliott.
Yes, thank you. I live just down the street from the Sutter House and work around the corner from it. I looked at the company Danco, who's going to be doing this. I'm very impressed with them, and I just wanted to let you know, I'm, I fully support the hotel being converted. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Teri.
Hi, Pamela. Good afternoon, mayor and city council members. My name is Teri Galvin, and I'm the executive director of Community Against Sexual Harp. As many of you know, my organization works with unhoused women and those at very high risk of homelessness. I have also been very involved in trying to understand the shelter and housing plans as they've emerged over the years. I don't have probably enough information to fully support or oppose this project. I would like to voice a couple of concerns. First, it's my understanding that this project would take the majority of funding for motel conversions throughout the city and has a very large per-room price tag. I have to wonder if this is the right strategy and if it is the most we could do without a mountain. We've also all spent a great deal of time discussing the need to place shelters in every district. The flip side of that is that every district should have access to the long-term solutions that we know actually impact homelessness in our neighborhoods, which is appropriate and maybe even innovative housing for those on the margins. I don't know that this project will allow us to keep moving in that direction. I also don't know that larger is better. There are certain trade-offs to run something like this well, and it certainly limits housing choice for those who need the assistance. Finally, efficient, coordinated, large-scale projects absolutely show progress, and of course, they help people. But it is my experience that they also tend to create the cracks that way too many people fall through each year. We have not had success navigating Hotel Berry or 7th and H or these other projects for the women we serve. So this is an area of concern.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Michael Alt.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of city council. Michael Alt with the Downtown Partnership. While we've had an opportunity to review the project here, the one thing I do want to reiterate, based on Mike Testa's comments, is we're very excited about having a new convention center, bringing some momentum downtown, and I just want us to keep in mind taking out of inventory some of our key hotel amenities that we have downtown. We're desperate to get additional customers, desperate to get additional resources for our business community, and we understand completely and are extremely supportive of the need to identify more opportunities to provide shelter for unhoused neighbors within the core, and we are committed to working. We just want to make sure that this is the best location, and also are there other alternatives potentially that can be utilized in the future that don't take hotel inventories offline and just be aware of the importance of supporting TOT and our hospitality community? So we will work, continue to work with you. We understand the importance of Project Home Key, but just want to make sure that we are being very strategic in how we cite these facilities and the properties we're taking offline. We'll continue to work with you and be a partner. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Joseph Smith.
Hi there, mayor, council. Joseph Smith, advocacy director at Loves and Fishes.
Hi there, Mayor, Council, Joseph Smith, Advocacy Director at Loves and Fishes. And I don't think I could be any more excited about a project right now. Yes, yes, yes. What, what a great location. It's right in a very impacted area. It's right along a light rail line. It's nearby Legal Services in Northern California, Wellspace, SNAP, the library. Just so many places that people can go and, and access services as well as the services they want to bring on-site. This is ninety-two units of housing, like real housing. And in the comprehensive siting plan, that was the goal, was to get people into real housing, and we have a real opportunity. Twenty-two million dollars seems, you know, you know, like a lot of money, but in the big picture of things, ninety-two households are going to get an opportunity to recreate their lives, and I think that's priceless. So anyway, you have my support, our support, and hopefully, a whole lot of other people's support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kendra Lewis.
Hello.
Good to hear from you, period. I'm C.C. and telling you in our office.
Michael, you need to put your, your, your zoom on mute, please. Michael Alt, thank you.
Kendra Lewis, it's your.
Hi, thank you. This is Adra O'Corral on behalf of the Sacramento Housing Alliance. The Sacramento region is in desperate need of more permanent supportive housing units to assist the Sacramento residents who experience chronic homelessness. The State of California has provided, provided an unprecedented amount of affordable housing funding, including programs like Project Home Key, to give us a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to take serious ground in the effort to build more affordable housing for those who currently are living on the streets. Sacramento Studios will allow for ninety-two permanent supportive homes with a total of nine units being ADA accessible. There will be comprehensive supportive services, including case management and resident services. Danco has over fifteen years of experience supervising over two thousand units in California, including nine hundred affordable units. With this experience developing permanent supportive housing, Danco will ensure residents get the support they need to stabilize their lives while also being good neighbors and contributing to the community. This project on H Street and Eleventh is a great use of underutilized vacant land near transit. There will be twenty-four-hour desk coverage, security patrol, in addition to management and maintenance staff. SHRA, as an affordable housing advocate and neighbors with our offices physically located around the corner from this development proposal, urges full support for this project. Daily, when we come to our offices, we see our unhoused sisters and brothers who already are living in distress in this neighborhood. Until everyone is off the streets, we need to capture every opportunity we can to build more permanent supportive housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is PJ.
Yes, I would just like to say that I wholly support the property Eleventh and H being converted to low-income assisted living for those who may be unhoused or close to being unhoused, as well as those living with mental health issues. I work in the immediate vicinity and look forward to this being an awesome use of an existing facility to get on the path to assisting all of our unhoused or low-income folks who may be unable to find consistent housing and who may be dealing with mental health, addiction, or other medical issues. I'm concerned that the business community, who purports to be concerned about unhoused people near their businesses, simultaneously shows more concern for visitors to our city than those who actually live here. This is why community needs to be part of the conversation, since businesses clearly seem to be more concerned for their bottom lines and the health of the communities they reside with in. I hope that we can find similar services elsewhere in downtown and midtown, as well as in every single district. I'd also like to know that there is some level of transparency and/or community involvement to keep contractors honest and ensure cuts aren't being made that result in incidental or purposeful cruelty or just don't take into account the real realities of day-to-day life with those that have, that have experienced homelessness and have needs that may, many who have housing privilege don't recognize, namely, things like food deserts, as I've heard happening out at the Motel Six off Mac, as well as other sites where I've seen hotel motel staff not keeping up the levels of cleanliness and maintenance as they previously had when operating as a hotel motel, despite being paid massively more to institute such programs. It makes no sense for us to pay these operators hundreds of thousands of dollars just to have the basic humanity of those living in such communities forgotten. Just because many may have experienced homelessness does not give us the right to forget their humanity and treat them as though we can short them when finally providing them housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Sean Wright. Sean Wright, it's your turn to present to the council. Will you, thank you.
Yes, good, good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers and SHRA. This is an incomplete and rushed project hidden from public view. I got a call from SHRA about a few weeks ago that they were going to apply for Home Key funds to finish this project. All of the issues are not addressed and assessed. For example, there isn't a plan for the restaurant, and that leaves many unanswered questions. The last time the city embarked on a rushed project for the homeless was the City Hall Garage. The garage was set on fire, now unusable, affecting the, the business tenants and a loss of revenue for the city and a huge repair cost. Please continue this item to allow for more stakeholders to review and comment. Give yourself and the city time to assess and address all the unintended consequences. This site sits in the middle of two other permanent supportive housing projects only four blocks away. The city should not overly concentrate services in any area. I also have to question the wisdom of removing quality hotel rooms that supports your efforts to offer larger conventions and guests at the Performing Arts Center. You need these hotel rooms right where they are, in close proximity to the venues that produce the tax revenues that you need. You're given a false choice to convert the rooms to housing or keep the motel rooms where they are. In your words, Mayor, you can do both. SHRA must have several other options of availability to the city that they could use to provide permanent supportive housing. This can't be the only option. You have thousands of people that are unhoused, and I hope that other options are brought to the table so that you're not given this false choice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And the last speaker on this item is Wesley Sage Walker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and Sacramento City Council members. My name is Wesley Sage Walker. I am part of a development group that has several projects in the Alkali Flat, Alkali Mansion Flats area. I want to speak to you today in support of the Alkali Mansion Flats Neighborhood Association's request for a two-week continuance to more fully study the potential impacts of, of this project. Very supportive of Project Home Key. I think that it's a, one of the best programs that's come out with respect to providing affordable housing, and certainly would not want to diminish that project in any sense. However, with this project, I think that, this specific project, rather, I think that there are some issues that the Neighborhood Association has laid out, specifically, in my mind, is the concentration of, of, of permanent affordable housing in this area. I think that there may be some issues that this may create with respect to future redevelopment and investment in the area. Furthermore, I would second their concerns and questions about whether this, in fact, is the highest ROI that can be achieved with these funds, and would urge you to consider the opportunity costs that this project may incur. So with that, I would request that there be a two-week continuance, or rather urge you to consider a two-week continuance to more fully study this project and any potential alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you to the members of the public for calling in. I do have a number of council members who want to speak. I'll, I'll speak after you. All Councilmember Valenzuela, in his district this project resides, please go first.
Thank you, Mayor, and I need to start first by thanking LaChelle and Christine and Danko for the incredible work you've done over a very short period of time to bring this forward. You've really taken the mandate of our comprehensive siting plan very seriously, and we're seeing that here. And you were on community meetings with me last week. You have been responding to my emails all weekend and into the evenings. So I just want to appreciate all the time and dedication you've all brought to this idea and to bringing this forward. Now, first, for my colleagues and for the public, I just want to emphasize something that was said that I think may have been missed, which is that this hotel is going to be sold. This is a very motivated seller. This is somebody who is looking to sell this building, who approached an affordable developer, which is great. You know, we hope that more people do that to say, we want out. We are not going, this is not going to stay hotel rooms. And I do empathize with the points of Mike Testa and others about the need for more hotel rooms downtown. Look forward to continuing to talk and work on that as we move forward. But in this case, keeping this a hotel is already off the table. So when we think about things like the last commenter just said in terms of ROI or opportunity costs, I want to highlight two things for us. One is that we are essentially getting ninety-two rooms for one point two million dollars, which is an incredible, incredible return on investment. With the state and federal grant money that we have available for this project, this is going to bring ninety-two households off the street for a fraction of the cost that it normally takes if we're going to build this on our own. So it's an incredible opportunity that was at our doorstep with this funding that will potentially be lost if we delay this vote today. And so this is why we brought it forward with such a sense of urgency. It's near a lot of light rail, it's near good job opportunities, it's near services. You know, we've already started some really exciting conversations with folks at the Northern California Construction Training Team, who's really excited to work with folks who are coming off the street to get them into trades jobs and to help train them for just the whole demand that's out there. And so this site's going to open up a lot of incredible opportunity because of where it is and what it is. And so I start with that. But the second thing I want to talk about is just, we can't have it both ways. You know, when it comes to economic development and economic recovery, you know, we will forever be hampered by the fact that we have citizens and residents on our street sleeping in front of the convention center, sleeping in front of the hotels and the restaurants and the businesses that we want people to patronize. Economic development and housing, people who are on the streets are mutually, those are not opposite goals. Those are things that we need to do together. If our economy is going to be resilient, if we are going to recover from this pandemic, if we are going to attract all of the amazing events and things that we want to our region, we have to figure out a way to get people off the streets in the central city. We have to find a way to get them safe. And this project with ninety-two units, I just have to say, those folks in the Cidres Chavas Plaza, I always talk a lot about the warming center that I worked on with Mayor Pro Tim Ashby and Councilmember Vang and the mayor last winter. We were housing about sixty folks at the peak of that. Those were folks that were largely sleeping in Cidres Chavas Plaza, who were willing to come inside, who wanted to follow the rules, who wanted to be safe. These are people who are ready for that step. And imagine what ninety-two rooms can do for those people that are still out on the streets almost ten months later, who have been ready for a really long time for the opportunities that arise, that are waiting for an opportunity like this to arise. You know, we talk a lot about offering resources to people when they're on the street, but we should also acknowledge the fact that there is no housing available for folks that are coming off the street. When it becomes available, it's a very small number, and it's usually very rare that we have those opportunities. And so this is a really big step forward for permanent housing. And once folks are there, they're not going to be homeless anymore, right? They're going to be residents. They're going to be people who are now ready to go work in local restaurants and be a participant in the community in a totally different way. And I welcome that, just as I welcome some of the market rate development that has not slowed down despite the presence of a lot of services in this neighborhood. We've had some of the best, and I would argue some of the pricier developments come in nearby this area. So this is not an either-or. This is a, we can do both. We can do all of these things together. And so I really hope that you'll support this project tonight. It is desperately needed, and I think our SHRA team and Danko Properties are amazing partners in this effort. So with that, I'd be happy to move this item, Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to, to start off the conversation.
Of course, there's a motion on the floor. Let's turn it over to Vice Mayor Chenier.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and second this, and let me, let me make a couple of comments and have some questions. I, I agree with Councilmember Valenzuela and some of the things that we've heard. I would much rather be talking about a new hotel that we're building than converting a hotel into what we're doing. But the fact of the matter is, we need to, to get the additional TOT to attract more, we need a clean and safe downtown, which means that we need to work to support those who are unhoused and find, find a roof to put over their heads and connect them with services. I, I don't know that we can't do both of these things, but, but we need to be very intentional about doing that. Christine, I, I do have a question. This is, would be a fifty-five-year piece of, of keeping it for affordable housing or for this purpose? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if at some time the city decided we wanted to buy this out or someone wanted to buy it out to convert it, is that possible to do, or is there anything that precludes that?
Well, I think the Housing Community Development Department, when they, in the state, when they create this program, is expected to stay on-site, but they do have opportunities for transitional housing to, and others to move them. So I think i- if we were to talk to the State of California at the time and were able to replace these units one for one, they might approve that. But we'd have to ask the state.
So that would still remain a possibility if at some point we really, you know, we're desperate for the hotel rooms and we had some of these other challenges solved.
I believe so, yes, if we asked the state and they were agreeable and we could, we could replace, replace the units.
Okay. So I, I have two things that I would like, and, and Councilmember Valenzuela, I'm going to ask that you accept these as friendly amendments. One is that we target those who are homeless in the area. We certainly have, and, and these are both lessons learned from WX. We made a commitment to, to that community that we would do our very best to, to house those individuals who are, in that case, it was within two blocks of the shelter. So I would hope we could do something very similar on this front. We know that there are many homeless downtown, and this should really cater to those folks. So that would be number one. Number two is also something we're doing at WX, which is we're using local restaurants to purchase food for the shelter. I would love to see us recycling that money if we have ninety-two units and the potential of a hundred and eighty people times three meals a day. We're, we're five to six hundred meals a day. And I just think that that would really benefit the local economy. So I'd love to see us put a requirement in there that over time, and I don't know that you can do this immediately, but over time, you're working to purchase all of the food from local restaurants. So those would be my two pieces of direction that I would ask that we could include in the motion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I just want to clarify with SHRA, are, is the current budget to provide all meals? Because I know there's kitchenettes as well.
That's correct. We anticipate residents being able to cook in their own units, so food will not be provided on a regular.
We're not doing it, we're not doing any food?
No.
Okay. Well, let me amend that then. If there are things that we can do that pumps money back into the local economy, we definitely would, would want to do that. So maybe that would be the direction.
Absolutely, happy to accept those two amendments, Vice Mayor.
Okay, with those two things, I'm, I'm happy to second the motion here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things here, a couple of questions. First, LaChelle, you mentioned that our entire region gets fifty-four million dollars, or is allowed to apply for fifty-four million dollars. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, there's a regional allocation, and then there's a statewide allocation. The regional allocation is fifty-four million in that Sacramento, Yolo, El Dorado, Lhasa, in Yuba.
And then we, we already used up twenty-five, twenty-nine million of that in our first, in our action last week. Is that correct?
Twenty-nine million, if, if our application is successful.
And then the action today, if we, our action today, the twenty, this, this twenty-five million, as you, as you meant, as was mentioned by one of the callers, that this would actually use the balance of what is our regional allocation. Is that correct?
Almost the entire amount within the regional allocation.
Within the regional allocation, almost the entire amount. What would be left if, if both of these applications were to go through? Or other projects?
Two, two or three million?
Two or three million. And each project, what, what, you know, these projects, what do they need usually to get off the ground?
We're averaging about fifteen to twenty million?
Fifteen, twenty million. And then the, the, as far as, I mean, you guys, SHRA is both the city and the county. Are you aware of other county projects or other cities in our area applying for these?
I'm not aware of any outside of the city and county. Obviously, we are working on, on the county side as well on Project Home Key, but outside of the city and county, I'm not aware. But that, it doesn't mean that those projects aren't out there.
No, that's correct, yeah. So really, it's, it's kind of, it's us in the city that's kind of planning how we want to go after this and which projects. We're, we're leading the way in this case. Is that, is that how you would, you would probably characterize it?
I would characterize that the city of Sacramento is definitely leading the way.
Well, I, I appreciate that. And then, you know, I've got some, some concerns here about the, that, you know, where our strategy is. Obviously, there's a need of housing everywhere in our, in our seat, in our city and at every level, but in permanent supportive housing, and I'm thinking about, you know, But in permanent supportive housing, and I'm thinking about, you know, the, the great success of the permanent supportive, supportive housing motel project on Stockton Boulevard. Uh, this isn't the transitional housing, so we aren't, so the folks that we bring in, generally, they'll probably be in there for a long time. Some transition out, some do move on, but they are there for, for a significant amount of time. Is that, is that how you do, you would describe this project?
This is permanent supportive housing, so yes, they will live there.
Okay, so it isn't really, uh, equivalent to like our, 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 um, our shelter, W X freeway where we're kind of trying to help people move in and, and trying to get as many people off the street, uh, per year. Is that, is that how, the difference between those two projects?
Right, is it, as you recall, one of the things in looking at the master siding plan was looking at really kind of all of these different levels where you move people into transitional housing, but then you also have to create some permanent housing. And so that's really where S H R A steps in, is to create the permanent housing for people to be able to transition out of the other opportunities that we're providing through safe ground, through tiny homes, through the shelters, so that they have a place to navigate to and don't get stuck there.
And I, and I, I appreciate, you know, the comments that, uh, uh, Councilmember Chenier, Vice Mayor Chenier brought up here about, you know, if there's a project located in an area, um, that you look at that area as where you would recruit them. So how would you, how would this work in this, in this effort? And, and if you were to execute this, this motion, how would this work? Because in that case, you're, 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 you're saying that none, that will it or will it not be people from the area that are, uh, unhoused?
So the Home Key Program, and this is the, a state of California, um, rule, um, says that, um, residents should be, um, referred through the continual care, um, program. So in Sacramento, as Sacramento steps forward, they would refuse further residents to us. But we've had great success with working with them in the past and may have to target certain neighborhoods. So while they'll have a list of eligible, uh, residents, I'm sure they'll be happy to sort of, to, you know, prioritize those in the central city.
Okay, well, I get, and, and that's great, because I do think that that's an important piece. And I guess my concern is how, um, if we were to be successful, because we always want to be successful when we submit these applications, um, uh, how does this affect other applications? You say, you know, for example, I, I've got a motel that since the night we voted on the, uh, the master plan, uh, we've had a willing property owner. And I think what's important here is the, and I think was brought up, there's a willing property owner. Very rare do we get very, you know, willing property owners. But, uh, across the city, um, you know, we've got this challenge. And if, my concern here is, uh, and this is more of a comment, I think, than a, than a, than a question. My, my serious concern is that if we use up all of this allocation and we're really leading the way, and this is master planning, um, and there aren't any more resources, say, for other of, uh, projects in, uh, other parts of the city, for example, and I'm speaking just for my district specifically, because, um, we spent many weeks trying to find resources for folks. Uh, and we have a willing property owner, willing to convert their motel conversion, yet we haven't seen any success and, 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 you know, to be quite frank, we've asked city staff and S H R A to look at a number of motels, and we do have a willing property owner. Uh, and I, I, I wonder if, if we're putting all our eggs in one area, and if the downtown area, I'm saying this hypothetically, is the only place that has, um, um, you know, resources that we're funding and we're targeting only the people that are near those areas, then areas like District Six, areas on Stockton Boulevard that don't have resources, then don't have places for people who run house to go. And I think that's my concern here, or I'm saying that. And can you maybe speak to that issue? Because that, that really is my, my concern. Has there been forethought about how then we address that if we're going to, you know, honor the, 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 the balance of making sure we're providing resources in a local area, but making sure we're providing resources for the rest of the city?
So I'm glad that you raised that issue. And one thing I need to clarify is that we're talking about the regional allocation, which is where we obviously have preference, and that's the fifty-four million dollars that Christine referred to. But in addition to that, the state has set aside over two hundred million in a statewide category. So once the regional allocation, then you move into the statewide allocation. So just by approving these two does not preclude the city from additional hotels being submitted. And so we will then compete first in our, uh, region, and then we will compete in the statewide. If we're not successful, then we also have another round of Home Key funding that the state is also going to issue. So our strategy is for us to obviously get those done that need to, um, have all of the resources. Everything is in order that we can get done quickly, so that we can take advantage of those funds and then line up all of these other hotels. So still looking at the hotels that you're talking about, as well as other hotels in other districts. I don't want people to think that this is just, you know, to and done. Um, we are definitely going to maximize every single cent that we can get from the state.
So then that goes back to my point here, I'm glad you say that, because I haven't seen the strategy. And to, to this point today, and I was a little, you know, I think it was about a week ago, uh, a little, maybe a little more that, that I became aware of this. And we've been advocating in our community, you know, even business owners have been online saying, "Look, we want to have a motel conversion, we need resources, there are people on our street and we can't find places to them." So we had to move them into other parts of the city. And unfortunately, that, that, that's not, I think, uh, having people to move five miles away, I don't think is a successful, successful strategy. So have you put together a strategy already? I mean, you talk about the strategy, is there a strategy that you've, uh, put on paper to look at how we're going to look at these other locations?
I think the strategy has been set by the council in terms of the directive that they provided to S H R A is to look at all available hotel hotels. I mean, we, there's not a hotel that we have not considered, and there are certain criteria that we look at. We look at in terms of what is the cost, is there a willing seller, can it be secured? I mean, there are a lot of criteria that we look at every single hotel to see if it's viable and really should rise up to the top as one that is successful and that we should really be moving forward under Home Key. In terms of a written strategy, I think the comprehensive siding plan is exactly that, it's very comprehensive and it dictates exactly where we, S H R A, are responsible for moving forward those six hotels.
So then let me ask you about the roadway end, have you responded to the roadway end?
We, we have not responded directly to the roadway end, because we have a meeting that is scheduled, I believe, for.
I think they're still trying to schedule it.
I think they're still trying to schedule the meeting.
As we, office is trying to schedule it.
Yeah, your, your staff has reached out to us, and so we are still trying to schedule and get into that meeting.
Hmm, yeah, so that's, and that's, again, that goes back to, back to my concern. There, there seems to be a very strong focus in areas, in the downtown area, but not in other parts of the city where we, where we desperately need resources.
No, I would, and all, with all due respect, I disagree, because this is one that actually came to us after the hotel found an affordable housing developer entered into a purchase and sale agreement and then came to us. So it wasn't one that we were actively seeking. This is one where they had already made this decision that they were going to sell the hotel, and they found an affordable housing developer, and then by the time S H R A was contacted, it was already under contract.
Well, I guess that's my concern here, that, um, it goes back to the point that we've provided affordable, we've, we've given S H R A an options and opportunities, at least in, uh, my council district, um, but we haven't seen a response yet. So I, I think this is great that there is a willing buyer who's done a lot of the legwork, but I'm still concerned that, you know, we haven't done that level of legwork on our own, in our, in our own area, when we've had a willing, uh, motel person who, the day of the council, uh, voted on, on this, was willing to do a motel conversion, sell their property, provide any option. Um, so I, look, I mean, I think, here's where I would like to see, and I don't know where the will of the council is, but I'd like this to come back here before we use up the balance of our regional allocation, and I don't think this could take a lot, uh, but come back in, in a week or two and, uh, give us the, the strategy that you're talking about and how we're going to fund these, these projects. That's what I would like to see there, uh, because I, I just feel that, again, we're, we're making it difficult for areas outside of the central city to get resources they need, particularly in the commercial corridors. And I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'll, uh, that I, I guess would, uh, I could, I could entertain that in a form of a motion there.
Is that, is that then a substitute motion, Councilmember Geta?
Oh, that's true, that's correct, yeah.
Uh, there is a, there's a motion on the floor, if you want to wait to see what the result of that main motion is before, and if it fails to make a secondary motion, or you can make a substitute motion now that you're.
Well, uh, just for the ease, I mean, I think we should just do the substitute, because if, if, if there's a will to, to continue, then there's a will, if not, then, and we could just, uh, dispense.
Okay, so substitute motion to, uh, continue this for two weeks, is that your substitute motion?
Correct.
With direction to come back with a, a.
Finance strategy on how we fund other projects throughout the city and not just, uh, I guess, put all our eggs in one basket. I mean, I think that there's been a lot of thought forth out here, but I'd, I'd like to see that, that strategy.
Okay, that's a, that's a substitute motion, uh, we'll see if there is a second either now or as we move through the, um, move through the queue. I know, uh, Councilmember Harris is next. Um, let Councilmember Valenzuela then probably respond to the substitute, because I do want to make some comments myself. Go ahead, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. This is a really interesting discussion, so we definitely have an opportunity before us here, there's no doubt about that, and, uh, much needed. You know, it, it's clear that we need permanent supportive housing in the city. But we have conflicting needs, so, you know, the economic revitalization of downtown is extremely important. And I think it needs to be considered in light of, of considering this opportunity. You know, as was pointed out by Councilmember Valenzuela and LaShaw Dozier, uh, in this situation, the hotelier wants to leave the business and wants to sell the property. Uh, so they found, uh, apparently they had a couple of people online to sell it to. I think that the council should really consider, uh, what this means in terms of losing hotel rooms. Um, we can't, we can't make sure that a subsequent buyer would be a hotelier who wants to use it in the same purpose that it's, that it's now serving. That would be the best thing for the city. We know that, uh, our central city is languishing. We know that we need more people moving downtown to fill in the gap of, of all the telework that's happening at the state. Uh, we know that we need to support the convention center and the, the new performing arts center. Uh, so, so those are factors that should be considered. You know, i- is P S H the highest and best use of this particular property? And if we decided not, do we have any latitude to steer the sale in a different direction? Clearly, if we didn't support this project, the seller would have to find, you know, a buyer, or perhaps Danko would do affordable housing there instead of P S H is another possibility. Without the Home Key funds, they are an affordable housing developer. Uh, that could be a, a, a very acceptable use downtown. Um, in fact, Councilmember Valenzuela is a champion for affordable housing. So there are these other possibilities, uh, that I think should be considered as a possibility. Um, so we have those two conflicting needs. We need permanent supportive housing, we need all kinds of housing product for the homeless, but we can't take our eye off the ball in terms of supporting the business community and revitalizing our downtown, because it's our economic engine. These are, um, very important things to consider, in my opinion. I have two motels in my district that where I would welcome a conversion to P S H. Uh, LaShaw and Christine are well aware of those, one of them has a very willing seller. Uh, you know, and, and here's the thing. I have always thought that these motel conversions should be of underperforming motels. In fact, that's when we first started searching out motels in the city for homeless uses, we looked for the underperforming motels, ostensibly because we thought we could probably get a, a better price, but why would you take inventory offline if it's doing well for the economy? Uh, the Motel Six on Alhambra comes to mind, because it's a problem, problematic spot, and converting it to P S H would solve a lot of problems, uh, in the area, and it would also provide very much needed P S H in that area or just generally for the city. As LaShaw said, there is more money to apply for, but, you know, I, I had, I've been trying to work that motel for two years. Now, so LaShaw, why, why did the Sutter House rise a little higher in the queue than, say, the Motel Six project?
I think, as I stated before, it's one that the, there was a very willing seller, and they actually had entered into a purchase and sale agreement. The amount that was, uh, being requested in terms of acts of the purchase price, uh, actually appraised at that particular amount, um, so that we knew that we would not have any issues of this being, uh, similar to the problem that we had at the Burka uh, situation where they wanted more than the hotel was actually worth. Um, and so those were the reasons why it, it came to the top of the list. Plus, we also need to invest in, um, working with a developer that has the capacity, uh, to pull a project like this off. Project Home Key is a very complicated application with the state, and their previous experience in doing a Home Key application also bodes very well for us partnering with them and being successful.
Yeah, okay, so I appreciate that. I believe I read in the staff report that your intent is to fence off the entire half block, is that correct?
Yes, we'll be looking at fencing options for the property.
So I, I understand the need for that, you know, to control the variables when you have permanent supportive housing, because, um, you know, there are variables that need controlling. When I think about having a property, a valuable property right in the heart of downtown that's fenced for the next fifty-five years, I'm a little daunted by that. But, uh, again, it gets to the idea of what is the highest and best use of that property? You know, if, if, in a perfect world, I would choose affordable housing over P S H on that site, whereas I prefer P S H in certainly underperforming motels, which this one is not.
If you look at the property on Twelfth Street, it is already fenced, um, there is a fence that, um, barricades the garage that does not open, it, and it is pretty decorative, so that's probably why you don't really notice that it's fencing. And then if you look as you go down, um, H Street, um, there wouldn't be fencing along every, because there's no need for fencing where it comes all the way out to the sidewalk. So essentially, the fencing would be more towards where the restaurant area is. And we'll be working on something that obviously is very, um, inviting and does not look like it's, uh, you know, fenced off in a way that is uninviting.
And then the, the last concern I have is that, uh, a lot of community members were not particularly aware of this project coming forth. As you said, it's come forth quickly, because there was an opportunity. And, um, there are definitely concerns. Some have been addressed in the last couple of hours in a flurry of phone calls, particularly around economic development around downtown and whether or not this could be, uh, you know, furthered as a hotel use. But, uh, you, you know, this came up to me rather suddenly, I, I got briefed on it by you last week uh, and was unaware of it there to fore. Um, I, I think I'm going to go ahead and, and second the substitute motion. I, you know, I, I don't think it would hurt to take a week, perhaps two, to work with the community and explain all, all of the things that were discussed here today, because there's not many people watching a two o'clock meeting. And yet, there is a lot of community angst. It, uh, it troubles me that I think we could address their concerns with a little bit more effort and get more support behind this. Again, I think it's an opportunity. Um, it's not the highest and best use, it's not my favorite spot to do P S H, but it could certainly be a good project. Uh, that's about all I have to say, I'll second, uh, Councilmember Guerra's substitute motion.
Okay, that, that, that will be the motion on the floor when we vote. I'm going to, uh, turn it to Mayor Pro Tim Ashby, then back to Councilmember Valenzuela, then, I said, unless Councilmember Valenzuela, you want me to go before you, I'm well, happy to give you the last word, if you would like, whatever you like.
Uh, sure, Mayor, I'll have to.
Okay, okay, good, then we'll go to Mayor Pro Tim Ashby.
I'm happy to have not the last word, and you guys can do that one now. Uh, first of all, I don't know, you know, I've been here a long time, like eleven years, and you know, LaShaw, she just never misses the target. So I've seen a lot of people try to stand her up and hit her with a billion questions. She wouldn't bring it to us if it wasn't already vetted. If she hadn't already answered all those questions, put together all the plan, that's why LaMancha is successful and why Mercy Housing is successful and why Hotel Berry is successful and why Law Valentin. and why Mercy Housing is successful and why Hotel Berry is successful and why LaValentina is successful. And I could keep going, but you get the point. She doesn't bring it to you until it's all the way baked. So while I don't have any problem with waiting two weeks, I'm not gonna support that motion because the second half of it is unnecessary. I don't need to hear from LaShel Dozier about her plan to fund affordable housing moving forward. She has a more than ten-year history of success. And uh there's no indication that all of a sudden something about that is going to change. I also have a hard time not supporting this when I just asked all of you to do the exact same thing for me and you voted unanimously to do so like two weeks ago. And let me tell you what, that was not an underperforming hotel. Is not in an underperforming area. I've built like five new hotels in the last three years, so more than replacing the T O T. In fact, I can replace the T O T for both my hotel and Katie's hotel if it makes everybody feel better. It I understand the plight of Michael Alt and Mike Testa because they are the spearheads of the other half of the equation that we're asking of our downtown. Just as Councilmember Harris very eloquently stated. We have two really important things that are both happening downtown. We have a large homeless population downtown that we have to address. We also are asking for a lot of investment in our downtown because we need to bring it back. It is languishing. We'd be lying to ourselves if we didn't acknowledge that. But so that doesn't mean we pass up this opportunity. It's not true that this is a false choice. Here's the choice in front of us today. We either say yes to letting S H R A do a project Home Key site, which will have twenty-four-hour supervision, wraparound services, and programming written in. Or we say no to them and the owner sells to a low-income apartment holder that doesn't have any of those things. And we have no ability to require. So I get it that we there, the argument can be made for every part of downtown to use every block for economic development, and it would be a good and solid argument. But then we also wouldn't have Lavender Courtyard. And we wouldn't have the Boys and Girls Club. And we wouldn't have LaValentina. And we wouldn't have a park, and we wouldn't have Ala Yusefi Square because all of those are civic amenities that don't, or housing units or components that are funded by us that don't necessarily have anything to do with economic development. But a community is a whole. It's not just one thing. And I think we owe Alkali Flat and Mansion Flats a promise here to come back with some strong investments on higher-end housing. And you know what? I think that's an appropriate ask for them to make with Councilmember Valenzuela. Look, we'll take this. But Councilmember Valenzuela, we need you to be mindful. We know you're a big champion of low-income housing, but heck, we need some high-end housing too. Right? And we'd like some grocery retail down here. We'd like you to help us seek that out as actively as you're seeking out solutions for low uh income housing and permanent wraparound supportive housing. You know what? I think she'd be receptive to that. I know the mayor would be. And I believe this council would be. So for me, uh there's no version of this where I don't stand with LaShel Dozier. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I don't know why any of you wouldn't. We asked our entire staff to make this our top priority. And not voting for it because there might be another hotel somewhere. It doesn't make any sense. There will be another round of funding next year. You have a mayor who is a former state senator who can say, hey, that project's really working. We'd like you to do another round, and he he'll he'll meaningfully impact that dialogue. This is not the last set of housing. And as a person who's halfway into this process, it's not easy. You can't just pick any hotel. She's gotta figure out how to have kitchens. She's gotta figure out which population best matches with that site. I know everybody wants families, but there's no junior high or high school anywhere near this site. So that'd be really tricky, right? And I think she's trying her best to answer your request of wraparound services and housing. If it were up to me, we wouldn't be doing parking and tents. We would only be doing this. Because I think this is the most powerful way to help people. So I I guess for my for my standpoint, I'm prepared to vote no on the substitute motion. Yes, on the original motion. And make a promise that I can only make for myself, but a promise to downtown, to Michael Alt, to Mike Testa, to Alkali Flat, to Sean Wright, to Mansion Flats, to Louis Sumter, and the rest of the folks who have reached out that are concerned that you have my commitment for an equal level of vim and vigor in fighting for high-end investment and economic development opportunities in the urban core as well. I know we need it. We'll keep fighting for it. We've done a lot of it. The three largest subsidy projects in the city in the last ten years are all in the urban core. The arena, the convention center, and the theater, but we can do more and we will, and you can count me in. But this is a moment where I would rather have S H R A with twenty-four-hour supervision and wraparound services providing housing than not. So that's where I'm at, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. I'll make a comment and then let uh Councilmember Valenzuela close, and then we will have a vote on the substitute motion depending on what happens there potentially on the main motion. First of all, um I I wanna direct my first comment to Councilmember Getta. I I was down uh with Councilmember Getta in his district. What was it? About two weeks ago. And like all of you, but I wanna single him out in this one. Um he is working tirelessly with his community to find alternatives for uh the homeless population that exists in his district. We know we had sort of a high-profile issue this last week with Stockton Boulevard. I'm going to get to why I strongly support the main motion in a moment, but I just wanna say to the council member, um I will work hand in hand with you to perfect and find the money for the right motel project in your district. Period end of story. Needs to happen. It needs to happen. So I just wanted to start with there. To um the leaders of the downtown business community, midtown business community. Um I think it's been stated already, this can no longer be a hotel because the seller has other intentions. I do wanna point out that nothing is in isolation because, as you know, we are working very hard, continue to work very hard on a convention center hotel. And though I can't report anything to you publicly, or let me just say we're making significant progress. We are committed to more hotels in the downtown midtown, just as we are committed uh as will be exemplified tonight with a multimillion-dollar clean and safe strategy and as much economic infusion and economic development as we can for the central city. But I wanna get to the issue at hand here today, and um this is a single project, but I also think that there is a larger issue at play here. In my opinion, uh a political body is most effective when it is both driven and consistent. The public should be able to see with the decisions that we make a pattern. That's what builds confidence. Our decisions should build upon each other. When we are inconsistent, it sends the community and our staff very mixed signals. You know, we've been working, LaShel Dozier and her team done a a great job with these Home Key projects, and this one, the last one. We've got uh Councilmember Vangs' project in i- in South Sacramento. I know that the staff looks at our, if not our body language, they look at our votes very closely. And if we were to say, nah, let's wait, let's hold off on this, I'm sorry, that sends a signal that we are not as serious about this mission as our prior votes and our prior actions have demonstrated. The question was asked by some of the speakers um concerned, and I think Councilmember Harris may have raised the same question. I forget. Are there alternatives? This plan calls for six converted hotels and motels. This is what we voted on unanimously on August the tenth, six of them. We are now at three. And so is there ever an argument for finding the money to meet Councilmember Getta's demand for a motel in his district? You better believe there is. We're three short even with this. This is a volume issue. I I've said that for five years now. It's not enough to just say we're helping some without at least making the effort to address the volume. That's what our business community, by the way, and our 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 neighborhoods are counting on. Because they want relief from these unending tent encampments, and the only way to do that is to create more capacity. So it is not one versus the other. We actually have to do at least three more. We have a comprehensive strategy, and I want our vote today and our vote going forward to be consistent with that strategy. Now, I will admit to you that this strategy with the money that we have, the hundred million plus the additional Home Key money, because remember, Home Key will be additive to the hundred million that we've already committed, is not enough. It is not enough to fulfill the plan, much less to assure that the implementation of the plan is sustainable. But I will tell you, we always find the money. We always do, and we will be competitive with that couple uh billion-dollar uh remainder that Director Dozier talked about in her testimony. We will find the money. Supporting the business community is paramount. But what are they asking for? Is there a higher priority? You talk about the highest and best use for the site. Is there a higher priority than getting people off the streets into transitional and or permanent housing? Ninety-two or a hundred or a hundred and fifty or two hundred at a time? I don't think so. I know we are governed by districts. And you all fight for your districts uh in ways that are effective and remarkable. And I know that the comprehensive plan is not perfect on the question of fair share, but it is a good start. From my end as the mayor, while we will continue to fight for fair share, a bed is a bed is a bed. A person safe from the streets is important no matter where they currently survive unsheltered. And I think we can't forget that. We have a bird in the hand here. Let's grab it and let's go do more. That's exactly what we committed to on the tenth of August. We have the beginnings of resources. We desperately need to finish and perfect that partnership with the county on roles and responsibilities, including our our fiscal and financial partnership. And we'll keep going after it and not cure this, but we will make it better. Thank you. Let's uh turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela. Then I see Council, well, you want the last word, Councilmember Valenzuela.
I actually love to chime in now. I've been waiting a while, Mayor, if that's.
Okay, while, your choice. Go go.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the discussion. Honestly, I am a huge fan of the fact that we're opening sites everywhere. You know, we've been hustling. Our team, this is most of what we do, is try to figure out where we can move camps and how we can open new sites, and I actually get quite a bit of heat of that from my constituents. My constituents are saying, slow down, stop opening sites in District Four. You're gonna take on the burden. We want everybody to open sites, and I always argue against that. And I argue against it due in large part to what I'm hearing in this conversation tonight. Like, no, we're all doing this. We're all passionate about this. I mean, did you ever think there'd come a day where we're kind of arguing about who gets the shelter and who gets the money for the shelter in their district? I don't know if anybody else is hearing that, but like, I think this is great, and I think this is great energy and really shows how far we've come as a council. We're like, wait, wait, I wanted my hotel. What about my hotel? And that's great. And I think we can do all of it because we've made the financial commitment as a city. We've made the like, we're on an item later today. We're talking about an additional forty million. Talking about more money coming down, future rounds opening up. I think the energy today is great, and I'm really excited um to hear the comments from my colleagues in Districts three and six, and and I wanna work with you on that because I agree, there just need to be shelters everywhere. We can't just have shelters in the central city because the need is everywhere, and we need to start working on that really, really hard. But the honest truth is, and I think LaShel said this at the beginning, and I just wanna reinforce it. The fact of the matter is, if we delay this vote today, none of us are gonna get funding potentially, and so we will miss the opportunity to get funding for a project because we wanna argue over other projects because even though we know more funding is coming. And so I just don't want us to like it feels like we're working against ourselves a little bit if we say we're gonna delay today because then we might, we're not gonna get any funding potentially for a project, and then we're all gonna lose out. And I think in the end, we need to be moving forward as quickly as we can on new projects, and this one's just ready to go. And it doesn't mean that I don't support the projects in your districts and want those to happen as quickly as possible. I also just wanna note that normally supportive housing can cost as much as five hundred K a door. We can debate many reasons why that is the case. This is about thirteen K. Um thirteen thousand dollars that we're spending of our money. The rest of it is federal and state money. That is a massive ROI if I've ever heard one. And you're right, Councilmember Harris. I get a lot. I am a huge champion of affordable housing, and I would love to say that the number one call I get from businesses downtown is for more affordable housing, but it's not. The number one call I'm getting from businesses in the central city is please help us with these camps. Please help us with the folks with mental health illness. Please help us with the folks that are having challenges on our street. Those are the folks that are disrupting businesses downtown. Those are the folks that we need to help. And so while I am a big champion of affordable housing, and I do see this as a win-win either way, I have to agree with what Mayor Protem said. I have to agree with what S H R A is saying. The urgent need is permanent supportive housing. We've gotta move these folks out of the street. They have to be our highest priority as a city. So I just wanna argue that in my thing that I'm not, I understand. Normally, I'm a big fan of process. I would love to say that, you know, we spent a lot of time emailing, a lot of time phone calling. It was on the news last week. We were at community meetings, Christine and I um last week, you know, answering these questions over and over again. There are a lot of misperceptions about this project. But in the end, to not act tonight and to lose an opportunity to get a lot of money that we wouldn't otherwise get if we wait to house ninety-two households, um which is simply the contrary to the action that we've taken as the mayor outlined. So I'm gonna vote no on the substitute motion respectfully and 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 promise myself to continue working with you to open sites in your district however I can be helpful.
Okay, thank you. We now have uh council members Harris, Getta, and Laloie.
Yeah, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna take you up on your offer to support me and trying to uh work with one or two of the motels in my district. I'm gonna want your energy there. LaShel, I I would hope that you would also work with me a little bit more energetically about those opportunities. I understand full well that this one presented itself to you, and that's a bonanza, and that's great. Um but you know, there are other opportunities that we really have to push for, and you know, going for the statewide pot of gold is gonna be probably a little tougher than the regional. But you know, sometimes you just have to dig in, and I know that you do. Believe me, I'm not doubting you in the slightest, you or Christine or anybody on your staff. We've worked together on Mirasol for a long time. We've talked about many, many issues over the years. Uh you know, I'm a I'm a fan and a supporter. I just would like to get a little bit more active on the potential projects, certainly in D three. The last thing I'd like to say is, um you know, Jay, you did a huge amount of outreach around the W X Shelter. Uh and and I really laud you for that. You did so many community meetings, and some of them were very contentious. You know, we do have a neighborhood association here that has a lot of angst about this. Uh I I really think it's not unreasonable to present this project a little bit more formally to the Neighborhood Association and get their buy-in. When you look at the options that are available here, to jump for the money, get permanent supportive housing, that's very attractive. And it can be very beneficial to Alkali Flats and Mansion Flats. But they need to be convinced that it's so, and right now they're not. That's why I'm supporting Councilmember Guerra's substitute motion. I think that that public outreach is valuable. I would like to have them in the fold than rather rather than being very worried about the possible repercussions of this. I don't think that a P S H installation in that area is going to cause problems. Uh you know, I know that S H R A uh can can make this project happen and happen well. Um of course, the proof is always in the management, and we'll see how that goes, but um you know, i- it really is important to assuage people's fears about these things. So that's why I'm supporting the substitute motion, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Fair enough. Councilmember Getta and then Laloie.
Uh Mayor, my comments only if uh if the if the substitute motion fails, then I'll then I'll speak on.
Oh, cuz you wanna wait on that. Okay, Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Um you know, I'm a I'm.
You know, I'm a big supporter of each council member's decision and views about their district. And I've been fairly clear on that from day one. But I do have some questions that I would like to ask Councilmember Valenzuela. So the total price on this particular facility is about twenty-nine million, right? Twenty-nine million. And then how much extra is it going to cost to retrofit this or remodel?
So the project budget includes the full budget, as I understand it, for renovations as well as for operations. And SHRA can correct me if I'm wrong. So there's no additional money that we're anticipating for that.
Great. And then, has the decision been made on who are the individuals that are going to be housing in this facility?
Not yet. And so that's something that will begin once we know we have the funding. Obviously, working with our service providers to do outreach and with VCR.
And the reason I bring that up is because as you're getting numerous calls from the business owners complaining about, you know, the unsheltered, especially the ones that are addicts or mental, that have mental illness. Is this the facility that you could possibly could think that we're going to bring, you know, some of the unsheltered to this facility?
Absolutely. The target area would be folks that are impacting in the downtown area and living in that nearby vicinity.
As I said, you know, I want to believe that I have, I want to support each council member within their district. But at the same time, I do believe that some of the residents within that area, if they have some additional information, it would be easier for them. Because ultimately, you have individuals that live in that area that have invested their, you know, life savings to buy a house and what have you for that environment. And then to create something new, and when the community doesn't really know the ins and outs of it, if I'm a property owner in that area, I have a lot of questions and I have a lot of concerns. And just kind of to follow up with my colleague Jeff Harris, is that, you know, some of that outreach, I think it's very critical. Because I hundred percent understand that we're taking the lead on fixing the homelessness issue within our city. But we also have to take our homeowners and home renters within our city. We have to take their rights in consideration as well. And, you know, from these conversations, when I'm hearing about the homeless community, we think about the businesses, which it's great. But very seldom do we talk about the residents within that environment, and how is this going to affect them? So that's the only thing that I like to throw out there. I mean, yes, thirteen thousand dollars per tour. You know, as much as I'm not a big fan of affordable housing, this is a slam dunk. That's the only thing that I've been getting a lot of calls from the residents from your district that they did not, they have not been engaged about this. And whether an extra two weeks allows us to do that engagement? And are we going to lose this deal if we extend it for two weeks? I'm going to leave that up to you. But one thing I know is a little bit more engagement with the community would definitely help. But if you think if we extend this by two weeks, we're going to lose on, lose out on this deal, then that's a whole separate discussion that, you know, I don't want to intervene in that or stop that.
I appreciate that, Councilmember. And just to be super clear on the process that was undertaken. I mean, this came about pretty quickly, and it's pretty unusual to have it come about this quickly. But the president of the Neighborhood Association who called in tonight was reached out to over three weeks ago. We were, the meetings that we were at last week were neighborhood meetings with that group of people. You know, Christine has done an excellent job of responding to every email and letter that we've gotten with technical clarifications and with more information where there were misunderstandings and making sure we're answering questions. I think in some cases, what we have here is a fundamental disagreement about whether there should be more permanent supportive housing in this area, which is totally fine, and I respect both sides of that debate. There are some people who still misunderstand sort of what the level of programming and services will be. We worked quickly. I was on, running around last week doing media interviews, making sure it was out in the local news, that we were publishing stuff on our social media, letting people know what the details were. So I think given the timeline of this project, I mean, obviously, there's always more outreach that can be done. But the neighborhood was engaged. It was the first request I made of Christine. When she said, who should I reach out to? I said Sean Wright with Alkali Mansion Flats. I mean, they are the neighborhood stakeholder. And so this conversation has been going on for longer than just the last few days. And I want to make sure you all have the benefit of that knowledge.
Great. I appreciate it. And if this should, and if I can just ask again you directly, if this should move forward, I would greatly appreciate if you continue some of that outreach with that community. Because there's that unknown factor that's making a lot of people nervous. And I think by them just being able to hear from you and hear what the outcome is going to be, it's going to kind of bring everybody's blood pressure lower. So that's the only thing that I want to, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Yeah. And the downtown partnership as well as Alkali Mansion Flats have been a part of our task force, our homelessness task force that we've been meeting since December. And so definitely we'll continue to engage and work with. And the beauty about this site, not only is it right across the street from SHRA, so we made the joke a couple of times last week that like, hey, if anything's wrong, we're going to see it, is it's also two blocks from City Hall. I mean, I drive by that every day when I'm on my way back home if I go into City Hall. So it's going to be a closely watched project, a very visible project, and one that we'll stay highly engaged in, I imagine, for a while to come.
Thank you.
Eric, if I can make a really quick comment, I just want to say, you know, clearly, we did a tremendous amount of outreach on WX, but much of that was after the decision was made to put the shelter there. So the outreach was really, how do we involve the neighborhood and get the neighborhood to have some ownership of it? And how do we work together on it? And I have no doubt that Councilmember Valenzuela will do the same with the neighborhoods around this if this moves forward.
Okay. Thank you very much. There is a substitute motion. Councilmember Garrett asked that we take that up first. If it's defeated, then he wants to speak. So the substitute motion is to delay for two weeks. Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Mayor, really quick, his substitute motion included more than just a delay of two weeks. It included some other direction, and that other part is why I'm voting no.
Okay, understood.
Councilmember Laloie?
Councilmember Valenzuela, we have, what, this week to make a decision on this particular site? Or we potentially will lose it, correct?
Yeah, this is a first-tempered serve grant opportunity.
I'm a no.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Vice Machinier?
No.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
No. All right, the substitute motion fails. Councilmember Geta?
Great, thank you. Well, Mr. Mayor, I think you took the words right out of my mouth. And I appreciate your dedication to wanting to address Stockton Boulevard. I do have a request for Councilmember Valenzuela and our second here that if this, with the make, with this motion, to give direction to SHRA and our city staff as well, to look at other sites throughout the city that are not just in the central city, to prioritize those out throughout the central city. I think to the point here that I was trying to make is there is a need everywhere. And I appreciated your comments and your willingness to support on that. So my ask here in my, the request for the amendment, and if the second will agree to that, is that the staff look at sites outside of the central city so that we can have some equitable resources and some attention to that. I mean, I've heard that from a number of council members now for that need. Would you welcome that amendment to your motion?
I would. And I just want to say that it's my understanding that LaShelle and her team have been working really hard to do just that based on our direction, but I'm happy to make that explicit.
Well, I appreciate that. And then, Vice Machinier?
I'm good with that.
Well, thank you. Because I, you know, one, I hear all the time about how we need resources in our area. And frankly, I also hear the concern that some of the neighbors have in the downtown area that, you know, they've got Seventh and H, they've got, you know, Capital, the, you know, the Capital Hotel. They've got this project, you know, the over-concentration in that area, you know, and the fact that they're, that if we are consistent, Mr. Mayor, you're saying we have to drive a message that's consistent. And we are going to only provide resources for folks that are homeless where the services are, then that's going to leave other areas without those resources. So I'd like to make sure that we start prioritizing areas of the city that don't have those resources. So I appreciate the dialogue. I think it was healthy. And I think it also underscores the need to communicate with those constituents better. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, with the changes to the motion and the second there, I will support the motion.
Yes, but I just want to, I just got to say one more thing because it just really strikes me, something Councilmember Valenzuela said, which I think we ought to take note of. Think about the mentality of this political body here that is arguing district by district because folks and members want more resources in their district to combat the problem. That's a good thing. That shows how far we've come. Think about history and think about other jurisdictions. Oh, my God. They've taken opposite tax. That's good and healthy.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
And let's go get the money.
I'll tell you that we're, in District Six, we've always liked our motel conversion, our permanent supportive housing. Down there on Stockton Boulevard, I took you there last week. It was great. We just need more of it.
Here, I'm mute, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I said, let us call the roll on the main motion as amended friendly. Thank you again to LaShelle and your team. Great work, Councilmember Valenzuela. Let's call the roll.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Machinier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Congratulations, Councilwoman Valenzuela. That's a yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, that's unanimous. That's great. Thank you very much. That concludes our Housing Authority agenda. Are there any reports from the agency or the executive director?
I just really wanted to emphasize the work that the staff has been doing on the Sacramento Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Sarah still continues, really making sure that we continue to reach out, let people know that those funds are available. To date, we have spent over sixty-six million dollars to residents within the city and county who need that assistance and over eight thousand households. So just want to encourage people to still continue to reach out through our website if they are in need of rental assistance, that we still have funds that are available. And that's all, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's a good report. Are there Housing Authority member ideas or questions? Do we have public testimony and items not on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
I show no hands raised to make public comment. Oh, I do. I have one caller, Teresa Arnold.
Go ahead.
Hi, Mayor, Council, and members of the council. I am Teresa Arnold. And I am the owner of the property in which you had an officer-involved shooting, where you shot my tenant on the, the police shot my tenant on the morning of September 7th. And in doing so, you, the police severely damaged my property, including ripping out the front window and the window frame, destroying the fence, landscaping, siding, and tear gassing my house. When the police returned my unit to me on the morning of September 8th, the front window that you all had destroyed was boarded up. About two or three weeks ago, I received an invoice from Community Development for the cost of boarding up the window that the city of Sacramento broke and damaged and ripped out. And that is absolutely outrageous. And what's adding insult to injury is the fact that the contractor's bill for the board-up was four hundred and eleven dollars, and Community Development added three hundred dollars to an admin fee. That is usury and outrageous because it can't have taken staff more than an hour to pay the contractor's bill and bill me, of which I don't think I should get billed. I don't think this bill is mine. It's wrong that you all are billing me for damage that you did on top of the rest of the damage you did. And I would like my invoice canceled, and I want to know how to get that to happen.
Mayor, can I make a recommendation here? Obviously, this comment's not particularly, I'm sure she's trying, it's not necessarily an SHRA comment, so we don't exactly have the right staff here. But my recommendation would be, Mindy, are you there with us?
Yes, I am.
Do you have her contact information?
I don't, but when we adjourn, if she'll stay on the line, I can get that information.
Okay. And then, Mindy, would you do us one more favor? Would you please connect her with the Office of Public Safety Accountability so that she can begin her, the correct and appropriate process for addressing her complaint?
Absolutely. So Ms. Arnold, if you'll stay on the line, when we adjourn, I can get your information. Thanks, Mindy.
Thank you very much for calling in. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for the suggestion. If there's nothing else to come before the Housing Authority, we will be adjourned and reconvene as a city council at five o'clock. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.